Full meeting order?
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
First tonight, we have a presentation, a proclamation, and it is for the Masonic Home of Missouri. I'm going to read it, and then when I finish reading it, if those who have come to receive it will come forward.
Whereas the Masonic Home of Missouri, dedicated on June 15, 1889, has for 125 years upheld the principles of brotherhood and charity, and whereas the Masonic Home of Missouri is a nonprofit charitable organization that provides assistance to eligible mason, eligible master masons, their wives, honored widows, female members of the Order of the Eastern Star, and children in need throughout the state of Missouri. And whereas Mexico, Missouri, has a Masonic Lodge, Hebron Lodge, number 354, whose members contribute to the well-being and quality of life for all citizens of the community through their own efforts and support of the Masonic Home of Missouri's outreach program. Now therefore, I Danbotz, Mayor of the City of Mexico, Missouri, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2014, as Masonic Home of Missouri Day in the City of Mexico, Missouri, and call all citizens to recognize the Masonic Home of Missouri and the Hebron Lodge, number 354, for the impact they have made and continue to make in our community.
If you would come forward, those of you here going to receive it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have the approval of the April 28, 2014 work session minutes. Motion approved.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And then the April 28, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Motion approved.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution, bill number 2014-30, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. For reading and passage, Bruce.
Yes, Your Honor. The East Central Drug Task Force was organized in 2001. It is a joint cooperative effort between the sheriff's offices of Audrain, Montgomery, and Warren Counties, and the police departments with the cities of Bowling Green, Mexico, Montgomery City, Vandelia, and the Missouri State Highway Patrol. Since then, there have been additional communities added. The task force identifies and targets for prosecution the most criminally active drug enterprises. It enhances its efforts through federal and state and local law enforcement resources and through well-coordinated activities seeking to be, as far as the investigative and prosecution avenues, and incarcerate drug offenders. In 2013-14, the grant year, the City of Mexico has anticipated contributing 12,000. The last year was 11,500. They're still assuming that will be the same amount this year. This does give us authority to go up to 12,000 if needed. And I, at this time, I will turn to Major Mesco, and Bryce will cover some of the numbers of activity that has happened in the Drug Task Force in the last year. Yes, please.
We didn't collect some of the numbers from the task force for 2013, and this is for area-wide, the whole area that they serve, but they made, they had 319 drug-related investigations, broke up 52 meth labs, made 232 arrests, served 104 search warrants, did 48 consent searches, and they estimated that the value, dollar value of the drugs that they seized was about 892,000, made 37 buys with their undercover officers. They have five high patrol members as part of the task force. The top three drugs that they report in the Mexico area are meth, marijuana, and prescription drugs, and we've seen a high, the highest increase of abuses in prescription drugs over 2013. Speaking just from Mexico Public Safety's perspective, about every, probably about every three weeks, we make some kind of an arrest with them, working with them. So, we've felt that it's been a good investment, and we get, you know, we get a return on the dollar for it. It's a partnership we'd like to stay part of.
So, as staff, we would recommend reading and passing each of the attached resolution.
Anyone have any questions?
Move for reading of bill number 2014-31, oh, wait, 30, I'm sorry.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force, whereas the East Central Drug Task Force is a joint cooperative effort between the sheriff's offices in Audrain, Montgomery, and Warren Counties, and police departments in the cities of Bowling Green, Mexico, Montgomery City, and Vandelia, and the Missouri State Highway Patrol. And whereas the East Central Drug Task Force identifies and targets for prosecution the most criminally active drug enterprises that affect the task force area, and all criminal activities of the drug enterprises are addressed by the task force. And whereas the City of Mexico desires to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force, now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. The memorandum of understanding is attached and marked as Exhibit 8. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2014-30.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have bill number 2014-31, resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a lease of business property with Wilderness Logistics Incorporated. For reading and passage.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a renewal of a lease with Wilderness for the city building in the industrial park, and to cover the details, I will turn to Russell Rutch.
Thank you. As you all recall, we set up three years ago a lease with Wilderness in the facility, 2201 Lakeview Road. That building had sat empty for a little while, and we were lucky and good and happy to have a tenant in it. They have created jobs. Their rent had been $5,000 per month, minus a few months where the, we had issues with the building retaining heat. So, we allowed a couple of months of free rent for that. The building, the lease itself has not changed except for the rent amount, which is based upon an increase in the CPI, and that now will be $5,200 per month. Staff recommends council proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. This is also an additional three-year term on this.
How many, excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you.
How many do they employ now?
We've got around 20.
Does that stay pretty?
Stays about the same, it was.
And we let go too much of that rent because of, because of what?
We had issues with the ability to keep the building heated, and there's an incredible amount of cost involved with heating that facility. We tried to do everything that we possibly could to insulate and do different things, but the only way we could really justify it was to allow those months' worth of rent free.
So, we had the same problem next year, probably?
How's the maintenance on the facility? I know we had a lot of maintenance issues. It was leaking, the roof was leaking. We spent a lot of money on the roof. Is it?
Well, there was, they have done a lot of the improvements themselves in the interior of the building. They added office space, cleaned the offices, repainted them, put new flooring in. It looks a lot different than it had, as you may recall when we first went and toured the facility.
Russell, would you move the mic up a little bit? It's kind of hard to hear you.
And, yes, periodically, we do have issues with the roof. They call us, we come in, have them fixed, and move forward. Really, the only way that roof's going to be 100% is when it's replaced.
Are we building any funds to be able to replace that roof?
These funds are going into a reserve.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I will move for a reading of bill number 2014-31.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2014-31, a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a lease of business property with Wilderness Logistics Incorporated, whereas the City of Mexico is the owner of a 50,000-square-foot industrial building located in the Mexico Industrial Park at 2201 Lakeview Road, and whereas the Wilderness Logistics Incorporated desires to continue to operate a distribution facility in Mexico at 2201 Lakeview in Mexico, Missouri. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign, on behalf of the City of Mexico, a lease of business property with Wilderness Logistics Incorporated, doing business as Cagney Global Logistics. Section two, this resolution will be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of bill number 2014-31.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance, bill number 2014-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Licenses, Occupation Taxes, and Business Regulations, Article 10, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri. It's up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Thank you, Your Honor. This agenda item concerns amending Chapter 6 of the city code, which will allow tasting of wine, malt beverage, distilled spirits, tastings on licensed premises. Chapter 311 of the Liquor Control Law of the State of Missouri allows tasting of wine, malt beverage, distilled spirit tastings on licensed premises, as long as the business possessing the qualifications and meeting the requirements of the licensed intoxicating beverage in the original package at a retail store. Staff has received a number of requests from local business owners that meet these requirements, that would like to hold testing or tasting events at their place of business on various dates throughout the licensed year. We are amending city code in accordance with state code to allow it and concurring with state code and to control it of a licensed establishment. A license fee under this section would be paid on an annual above and beyond their normal licensing, which would be for $37.50. The business applicant would still need to have the licensed premise to sell it, and this would be in addition to their regular retail license. At this time, staff would recommend that council proceed with the two readings by title and pass each of the attached ordinance.
What would be the difference between the tasting and actually selling of beverage?
The, for, like a retail establishment, they do not have liquor-by-the-drink license, okay? So, therefore, if they have, like, a wine distributor come in and would like to do, like, a wine tasting event, they would need this license to do that. Absent of a tasting permit, they could apply for a liquor-by-the-drink, which would, we think would cause additional issues in a retail establishment versus a tasting situation for an event.
Your Honor, when I first read this, in my understanding of it, I was not in favor of it. I don't think that there's any intention upon the part of the city, certainly by public safety, to encourage people to drink alcoholic beverages and then get in the car and drive off. But I have been assured by the city manager that we have a better control over that if we go ahead and pass the ordinance, make them be licensees, and get a special license. And so, I'm going to support this at this time with the understanding that I would withdraw my support if we have a problem along those lines.
Okay.
We'll have to come back and change it, so.
And as Councilman Miller commented, with a licensing, then we can control it, and if there's a violation, we don't have to issue it again. Whereas, we do not have as much control if they go the other direction.
How was the fee established?
I can turn to Marcy with that, but it is a, is a fee that is one and a half times the state rate.
That's regulated by the state, the rate that you can charge?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, I read bill number 2014-32, two readings by title only.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2014-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Licenses, Occupation Taxes, and Business Regulations, Article 10, Alcoholic Beverages, as the City of Mexico Code. Move for second reading of bill number 2014, bill number 2014-32.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2014-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Licenses, Occupation Taxes, and Business Regulations, Article 10, Alcoholic Beverages of the Mexico City Code. Move for passage of bill number 2014-32.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have appointments to the 21st Century Fund Board.
Thank you, Your Honor. This agenda item concerns appointments to the board that need to be filled by council. Advertisements have been placed asking for interested parties, citizens, to submit applications. We currently have three vacancies on the board. We did receive two applicants, Beverly McFarlane and Nancy Geddicki, expressing interest in serving on the board. Staff would recommend that these two be appointed to the vacant terms that expire in 2016.
I make a motion to read Beverly McFarlane and Nancy Geddicki on the 21st Century Fund.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to hold a work session and regular meeting on Tuesday, May 27, 2014, due to the Memorial Day holiday falling on Monday, which is our regular meeting day.
I don't know that I have anything else to add. I would just be moving the meeting one day back because of the holiday.
So, move, Senator.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next, we have the claims.
Make a motion to pass the claim.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Come to council comments. Councilman Lash?
I have a question, and this is more, I guess, procedural question, but it's also a question involving letting people know what we're doing. At the last meeting, we had an individual come up here and talk about sewer problem, and the city, Bruce, issued an emergency spending to do that, and I don't have any problem with that, because there's times you need to go ahead and get things approved to get things done. But the question is, how do we make that public or give the council feedback on those type of things, like, what did you do, how much you spend, is there a procedure for that? I don't, and maybe, maybe there is, I don't know.
There, in the purchasing policies, there is a procedure to follow, that we follow, and then when we do such a thing, that's when I notify you in the council brief of the expenditure, and, and also then at the council meeting because of the timing.
So, you did tell us how much was spent at a public meeting?
Right, what it, what it, yes. What it allows up to is an amount of $10,000. This was below $10,000. So, by the purchasing policies, I have the authority, under a budgeted item, to go up to $10,000.
Okay, well, I was concerned about notification, not only to the council meeting, but to the public, as well as how funds are being spent. So, that was my concern. Second, I think all the council members received a letter from the YMCA about parking issues and problems, or how is that going?
Yes. As I think that I notified you as well on Friday in the, in the council brief regarding that, was that we have met as staff with the YMCA, and maybe I should back up a little bit about what the issues really are. And what you're having is, on Saturday specifically, you have a lot of programs going on at the Y as well as at the park, at Fairgrounds Park, which creates a lot of traffic and a lot of kids, and concern for the number of kids that are moving in and out of the vehicles, as far as through the traffic across the road and so on. So, the discussion that they were having was in regards to how to improve safety of those kids in this area. And so, the discussion that was held was, is how do we do that? And I think they came up with, what, three suggestions? One would be that a crosswalk be identified and clearly would be signed, and so that it was a clear pedestrian crossing that was more visible, and to try to encourage them to use that area so that people knew the designated area that had the proper visibility. The additional thing was to do some limiting of parking along that particular street, as well as it enters into there, especially in the blind areas. And a third would be, at one point, there was an additional entrance, which was more down by the tennis course, basketball court area, and that would be to reopen that and to allow better circulation of traffic through there, therefore, limiting the number of traffic through the one entrance. And so, that was the three suggestions that they worked on together, that they felt was the best way to handle it, and funding for all that can be dealt with through the budget.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Williams?
Personally, on the Y thing, my kid plays on a lot of those things, so I can understand what they're saying. I would say the one that's going to help you the most is to reopen that entrance, because that's the problem, because you got people coming in and out at the end of games, because another game's trying, and you've only got one lane through there. So, if you did, where people could go out a different way, I think that would be a huge benefit, so. I might got two comments. One is, have we ever heard anything else? Are we about 54 out there with DOT? Because...
No, we haven't.
Is that probably going to be next budget year for them, or? I just got a lot of people asking me, because we said, you know, they, we had the deal out there.
We're somewhat hostage to their discretionary studies fund, and I have not had any word from Brian Hafner about that, so I'm assuming we're probably out of luck for this year. Whether he can get something into next year remains to be seen.
And on that same note, I'll say, I appreciate the Public Safety Department. I know you guys have been putting the speed sign down through there, and seems like that might be slowing people down a little bit, so we haven't had any accidents out there, so I appreciate you guys trying to focus on that area out there, so. And that would be it.
Councilman Nichols?
Kenzie, we've got a Francis between Gray Street and Omar Street. We've got a ditch to turn into pond. I don't know if we need to open or have Chad stock it. It's, yeah. It's really, guy called me complaining about it. I was like, this is pretty bad.
Our engineering has been working with Missouri American. They replaced water line along that street back last fall, and this spring, they've been replacing driveway culverts. We've been working with them, try to get those culverts in at a grade that will drain, but I believe they still have some work to do on the ditch.
Oh, yeah.
And that, so we've been working with Missouri American on that.
Yeah, kind of a timeframe, you know?
I, our timeframe would have been already done, but I know, we're, again, because they, Missouri American contracts that work out, we're trying to work with their contractor on their schedule.
Because one of the owners told me that every time I talked to somebody, he said that they're working on it, trying to nail down...
It is dug out since last fall.
Yeah. That's the same mess was on Gray Street, I was just right in the corner of it.
Yeah, Margarita Gray, part of Omar, Francis on Moore's over to Claire. They've replaced water lines in all that area.
I wonder, he told me that somebody came around, pumped it up with a sump pump. Yeah, that's bad when you got to pump your ditch out.
I hadn't heard about that.
Yeah, heard about that this morning, so, okay. That's all I've got.
Councilman Miller?
Mayor, first of all, thank you for the proclamation for the Masonic Home of Missouri. As a member of the organization and past master of the local lodge, I'm deeply appreciative of the recognition. I have several concerns about streets that Kenzie has addressed for me. I think probably there's no change in the Moore Street project, at least at this point, is there?
I, actually, I asked the consultant for an update on that today, and the, the contact engineer tried to get that for me. The, the project engineer was out of the office today. He was working, but was out of the office, so I expect I'll give something tomorrow, and we'll pass that on.
Okay. I submitted to the city manager this afternoon, well, this morning, I guess, late, some suggestions about improving looks of the west entry into Mexico. I don't know whether my ideas are viable or not, but I would like to see something done. And he tells me that perhaps that will be included in the comprehensive plan, so I'll just say that I look forward to the comprehensive plan and see what, what changes we can make to make that entryway into Mexico from the west a little nicer, and perhaps a little more informative for drivers. Thank you.
I will add to that comment, if I may, just a little bit, as part of the comprehensive plan, and the, by the way, the final draft is done, and that will be distributed here in the next 10 days for viewing. But that was one of the things that was noted very heavily, is that entrance signage, directional signage, general cleanup of entrances in the community, as far as overall appearance, is one of the things that was highlighted as far as the plan and identified by a number of residents as, as a... Your Honor, I have a couple of things. One is the Clean It Up, Green It Up program, which is part of the Adopt a Street program and just general neighborhood cleanup. That event will be held this Saturday, May 17, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Kickoff will be at 9:00 a.m. at Hardin Park. Volunteer registration, pickup supplies, all that can happen. At that time, for additional information, call the city number and ask for community development, and they can get you signed up as well, as far as picking up anything and helping with community beautification.
And they're going to feed you?
Yes, they do have a continental breakfast that morning to get you started. The next thing is that the Planning and Zoning Commission met, I believe that was just last week, and they had reviewed the ordinance request that was given them in regards to modifying the ordinance reference livestock and fowl to name...
modifying the ordinance reference livestock and fowl, to mainly talk about keeping of chickens within the city limits. And as you know, the current ordinance does allow it, however, you have to have the appropriate setback, which really allows it, which what I'd call much more of an open agricultural type area, meaning if you have a large enough acreage, and/or on what I consider more of a farm-type setting, on more of the edge of the community type. They did review that ordinance, they discussed a number of things regarding it, and their recommendation that they have passed back to city council was that they are recommending no change in the ordinance. They feel that in the best interest of the community, the ordinance is written the way they intended, and they would like to see it stay that way. That's all I have.
The only thing I have is kind of a follow-up. You delineated three things to help the Saturday morning issue around the Y. Is there a reason not to just go ahead and open that other entrance?
At this time, I think it's just a matter of timing, in order to get the sod removed, and gravel, and so on, surface into it, that you can do it, I think, is the issue.
Oh, so, okay. I didn't know what the surface was, and what.
Yeah, it's dirt.
Oh, there is that.
Dirt and grass right now.
Okay.
Everybody will be a little.
Well, if they're out there playing, then I, I don't.
So I think it's a matter of timing, is when they could get in and do the work. The work order's been issued to proceed with it.
Okay. Great. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comments, and if you would like to address the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we, please, try to observe our three-minute time limit, if you would, please.
Three minutes, really? That's how I'm getting. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, I'm here to introduce myself about something that's going on. I'm Keith Ozer. I am the principal owner in the Weber store that's just north of Walmart, and I have with me, I mean, I'm a majority owner in it, but I have with me what I like to call my minority owner, but the majority of the intellectual part of it. So her name's Denise Minkowski. She's been nice enough to come down from Wentzville tonight with me to kind of give you a little education about Vapor E cigarettes, because I know you guys got some stuff going on with Smoke Free, so I'm going to turn it over to Denise.
Is it okay if I approach you to give you some information?
Yes.
Don't expect you to read it tonight. It's in time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, as Keith said, my name is Denise Minkowski, and about almost four years ago, I began to use a Vapor cigarette instead of an actual tobacco cigarette. So for 25 years, I smoked, starting as a kid, picked up a Vapor cigarette, and haven't smoked since. With that in mind, I was also a, I worked for a large insurance company as an underwriter, and it was my corporate, corporate job that I hated. Enjoyed it for quite a few years. I underwrote a lot of business for Missouri, actually, for the work comp pool, so you guys are probably familiar with that. Decided that, after taking an electronic cigarette down to my grandmother's house in Illinois, 76-year smoker, handed her a Vapor cigarette, and she hasn't smoked since, at 93 years old. Decided to open up a business, anti-drugs, applaud you guys for doing such a great job of getting rid of a lot of the drug activities that are going on. So I opened up a shop called Old Town Kettles and Cups, and I brought Vapor cigarettes into that. Probably the biggest business mistake I could have making, made with the name, but yet it provided an opportunity to introduce an electronic cigarette to a community, a farming community, Wentzville. Trains, farms, that's the way it is. Now it's 30,000 people strong, but it's always a small town at heart. Same thing for Mexico. I had people driving from Mexico to my shop over the last two and a half years, bringing tax dollars our way, and met Keith, he was a customer of mine, we partnered up, and we brought it to Mexico. I've gotten wind that you guys are talking about a smoking ban here in Mexico. I would ask you that you allow the businesses to make that decision, because I think that's their right, but if nonetheless, if the voters decide to ban smoking, at least don't include Vapor in that. Give them an alternative. I'm not saying that everybody that picks up a Vapor cigarette quits, but a lot of people are replacing it. Now recently, on the news, you probably noticed a lot of scare tactics through the media, and unfortunately, whenever the FDA was getting ready to put out proposed regulations, the media got on board with that to scare people. Not saying that it's a perfect device, but I'm saying it's a less harmful way of smoking, because a smoker's going to smoke. They choose to do that. We know the risks that we take. But with an electronic cigarette, at least you're not affecting the people around you. So it is a viable alternative to cigarettes. Patches I've tried, I've had the ear therapy hypnosis. 25 years later, I was still smoking. I picked up an electronic cigarette, I started at a medium level of nicotine, and I'm down to six milligram. And what that means is for every milliliter of juice that I use, and I use about a milliliter and a half a day, I get six milligrams of nicotine. They've recently had a study that came out that showed that even though I was vaping a lot, I was still getting less nicotine from that, from the electronic cigarette than I was the actual cigarette. That made me very happy, because for a long time, I did 16 milligrams, which is probably equivalent to about a pack to a pack and a half smoker a day. And that's not based off the science, that's based off of thousands of customers that I've assisted. Vapor Locker is an outstanding store, not just because I've started it and own it. We don't sell to minors, we could have, we chose not to. We don't carry drug paraphernalia in our stores. We could make a lot of money, but we choose not to. Don't support it. In fact, the shops that do, I don't support them. I am a leader in our community, I feel. A lot of people come to our shop, because we're the first one in the St. Louis area to begin it in a brick and mortar situation. You had online going on, we had a guy go out of his garage who built a great business. We signed a lease and committed to it for two years, and people are coming from all over, Indiana, Kentucky, everywhere. And now the stores are everywhere, and unfortunately, with that, we have to have some regulation. We're just asking that you don't include it in the smoking ban, because there's no combustion that goes on. The packet of information that I've given you is from CASA. It is a consumer advocacy group. We provide money to them, all the different vapors are, so that they can do independent studies, so that the FDA isn't dictating the study, because big tobacco and big pharmaceutical companies are behind that. We wanted independent studies by vapors, providing it, and get an independent study done, so we can find out the truths behind it. With that in mind, we don't know the long-term effects, but I can tell you that propylene glycol, which is a nebulizer and inhalers, vegetable glycerin is a plant extract for moisture, nicotine is equivalently bad to, bad for as caffeine, and food flavorings, which in all honesty, food flavorings are the unknown, but we know this. So I'm inviting you guys to ask me a bunch of questions, you don't have to tonight. I'm at your disposal, so if you guys want to meet sometime, we can sit down with Keith, talk about all the different things that I've learned along the way, because there's a lot of it, more than, I'm sure I've already went over my three minutes, so I could talk for hours. Very passionate about it. I apologize. Sorry for taking your time.
Thank you.
I think it's important, though, whenever you go to look at a smoking ban, how you're going to put Vapor in that, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
My name's Donnie Kofer, I live at 600 North Washington, as you all know. Tonight's a really good example of what's going on in my street. I got pretty wet walking out to my car, and it wasn't all from the rain coming down, it was a lot of it going over my sidewalk again. I know you guys have tried coming up there and pushing the gravel back up. It's Band-Aid, we've said it, we all know it. Rita's not here, I was kind of hoping to find out if she's gotten anywhere with a grant to try to do something as far as curb and go. Water's coming over the road, it's like inch and three eights, night before last, I think it was. Well, if it's coming to the road hard enough, I think a car could hide a plane, I really do. I mean, it was coming over last night, or yesterday, rather, during the rain. It was coming down my sidewalk that deep. I mean, I think it could have taken me off my feet, walking across my sidewalk to get to the vehicle. I'm not trying to be a crybaby, guys, we got to do something. And another thing I wanted to comment on was I was shot down on a stop sign there on the corner, because of the kids in the neighborhood, and how I'd actually talked to the older kids, trying to keep the younger kids out of the street. They told me that it just didn't work out, and I appreciate you getting ahold of me on that. But if that's, if that's going to be the case, if we can't get a stop sign there, I've had a police officer once that I've seen come down there, I've asked that a police officer sit there, you know, just to try to get people deterred a little bit, you know, they talk about if you put a stop sign there, people go faster from stop sign to stop sign. Well, they're certainly going faster going down that hill, both ways, north and south. On the smoking, man, we're going to be flying a swastika for long. You got to cut down on the control, you got to. People in Mexico aren't going to put up with that. I mean, they're really not. There's a lot of people, yes, that don't smoke, but there's also a lot of people that do, and even some of the people that don't smoke don't want their government thumb on them, you know? You got to keep that thumb off people, let them have a little bit of rights of their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name's Thomas Feedler. I live on 1617 Meadow Lane, it's over by the Presbyterian Church. I wasn't really going to speak tonight, but since the can of worms got opened, the smoking ban is coming up. I was going to wait till next week and, you know, kind of hear everything that had to be said on it. Me and my wife started a group called Liberty in Mexico, Missouri. The point of the group is specifically to address liberty issues, and this is one that we feel very strongly about, is a government control of a private property. When you enact a smoking ban, you're specifically telling people what they can and cannot do in the confines of places that they have paid to own and operate. So I'd just like to urge you all to think about it, you know, feel free to talk to me. A lot of background in liberty, six-years military veteran, disabled now, so that's why I'm choosing to fight in politics now, you know? Put on some weight, when my knees went out, I couldn't run anymore, and the Army didn't really want the chubby guy that couldn't run in the Army. Made sense, I don't blame them, but I'd love to talk to each of you individually, too, if I could, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
John Lloyd, I own Lloyd's Lock Company here in Mexico, over at 104 North Elmwood Drive. I thank everybody on the council, who's either been a client in the past. In regards to the smoking ban, it's my business. We've been non-smoking since it's been at its current location, which is since when I was a big. But we chose to do that. My dad was a smoker, probably from 18 to the time of his death, but we were a non-smoking shop, by our choice. Please let the businesses make that choice, if they want. I mean, it is not, you don't have to go into any business, you're not required to go into anybody's business. You know, let your money speak for you. And I just urge the council, please let me, as a business owner, make the decisions that I feel is best for my business. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Yes.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Feedler, I live at 1617 Meadow Lane, I'm his wife that he referred to a moment ago. I would also like to speak with you about the smoking ban. A friend of mine invited me on Facebook to their, to their group called Smoke Free Mexico. The moment I saw it, I wasn't sure what they were trying to do, I wasn't sure if they were trying to go to individual businesses, to talk to the business owners, and, and get them to be smoke-free, so they could go to those businesses. And if that's what they were doing, then I would be all for it, but I eventually learned that they were actually petitioning, and are going to bring a presentation here in a couple weeks to you all, to actually put a citywide ban in place. So when I found out about this, I've recently learned that they have over 1,000 signatures, so my husband and I, we're just, we're, like he said, that it's a liberty issue, it's not a smoking issue, neither of us smoke. So I decided to put together my own petition, and we started distributing it on Friday, and have over 200 signatures already. This is a very important issue to the, to the, everyone in Mexico, I mean, everybody seems to be on one side or the other, but we did not want it to just go unnoticed, that there's over 1,000 signatures one way, we didn't want it to go unnoticed, that there are people on the other side of the issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move we adjourn.
Lash?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.